All right, Mr. Chairman, you can call the meeting to order.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, but we got just a second. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Sorry about the delay. Had a little problem here with the telephone numbers and everything up this morning. So, we'll call the meeting to order. I'm assuming is everyone here? Do we have a quorum for all the members here?
Yes, Cindy Fontana's here.
Brad, yes. Brad George here.
All right.
Beth Burns is here.
Oh. All right, uh, Mr. Smith, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I will, Mr. Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
All right, Mr. Smith has made a motion. Um, we, uh, need to go around the room here since we're on recording. And each person, uh, each person's gonna need to vote individually, so.
Mr. Chair, this is Brad George, I second the motion.
Don?
Go ahead with your vote.
Don, Don.
Yeah.
This is Richard Schwartz. Um, what you need to do is call the roll, um, every time when you're, when you're asking for a vote. So, we've got a motion by Ken, and I heard Brad George say he seconded to approve the agenda. So, now, Don, you need to call everybody's name and get their vote.
Okay, Ken Smith.
Uh.
All right, Cindy Fontana.
Uh.
Brad George.
Uh.
And Beth Burns.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. All right, consent agenda. Um, do we have a motion to approve that?
Chair, I make a motion to approve the Twenty First Century Community Learning Centers Program Agreement, so there's consent agenda. This is Brad George.
I second the mo- motion, Ken Smith.
Okay, Mr. George has made the motion, and Mr. Smith has seconded. All right, as for the votes, uh, Mr. Smith.
Uh.
Ms. Fontana.
Uh.
Mr. George.
Uh.
Ms. Burns.
Aye.
Okay, vote is unanimous, thank you. Uh, under the action agenda, Pender County School Reentry Plan, uh, Dr. Hill and Dr. Aiken.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, uh, if you would pull out your packet, it's, uh, the PCS School Reentry Plan. Uh, following the, the information we provided to the board, uh, last week and yesterday. I'd like to read directly from the top of that page because as delicate as this is, there really is no perfect plan. There is no right plan, I would say, that's gonna solve this. It is really the, the best of the situation that we have at our, at our, at our time. And, um, we're trying to put together everyone's input and try to come up with something that will, will give you an option that you can at least try to start the school year with as we monitor, as we go. Um, per Governor Cooper's directive issued on July fourteenth, all school systems are required to open under a Plan B option. This option directs schools to limit the number of students, teachers, staff, and visitors in a school building to the extent necessary to maintain six feet of distance in classrooms, restrooms, locker rooms, cafeterias, playgrounds, etc. All school systems are also required to offer an online option to any student in grades K-12 who request the opportunity. Five possible scenarios have been developed based on staff and family surveys, a review of the physical space available in each of the Pender County school buildings, and the requirements listed in the State Health Department Strong Schools, North Carolina Public Health Toolkit. In all grade levels, accommodations will be made for our exceptional children and special needs populations. While we don't have the specific details yet of those accommodations, our Exceptional Children's Department is working with school, each school individually to identify the best plan for instructional delivery and learning. The plans presented are guidelines that are subject to change based on the status and severity of COVID-19 per state and local government public health requirements. So, Mr. Chair, uh, we, we propose, uh, five options here. They come from all the information that we were able to gather locally from families, from focus groups, uh, advisory groups, uh, all our, our, our public government partners, public government themselves, especially DHHS. Um, and we were, we actually researched what was going on around the state, and, and all of that's pretty much represented in, in somewhere in these five options. And option five is, is somewhat of a hybrid. Um, option one is some students attend on Monday, Wednesday, and a group, and a different group attends Tuesday, Thursday. When students are not in school, they would use online learning. Students work online on Friday while teachers conduct PLCs, planning, etc. Option two, some students attend on Monday, Tuesday, and a different group attends Thursday, Friday. When students are not in school, they would use online learning. Students work online on Wednesdays while teachers conduct PLCs, planning, etc. Option three is split students into two groups, alternating students every other week. Students across grade levels would be assigned to a cohort by family so that siblings in different grade levels would attend the same week. While students are not in school, they would work online. Option four is split students into two groups, alternating students every two weeks. Students across grade levels would be assigned to a cohort by family so that siblings in different grade levels would attend the same week while students are not in school. They would work online. Option five is a hybrid, um, a combination of the above. K-8 students would be divided into two cohorts, Cohort A and B, and attend school based on option two listed above. Nine through twelfth grade students would be divided into three cohorts, Cohort A, Cohort B, Cohort C. Each cohort would attend one full week, Monday through Friday, and then rotate out for two weeks. While students are not in school, all students would continue with online learning. On these scenarios, based on input from, uh, education, all our stakeholders, families, um, what we have found is that, and based on solely on, uh, the requirements by the state and the governor's office, is that option five is the recommended option as K-8 students would be going to school every week and would be seen by a teacher every week. Uh, and they could phase in at two days a week. Uh, health professionals, uh, indicated that option two may be better because it would allow us a break. If we did Monday, Tuesdays, we would have a Wednesday break where there would not be a heavy population of students in the building, and we would be allowed to let the building rest, and we would also be allowed to, um, disinfect the building at even a more increased rate on Wednesdays, and then we could do again at the end of the week. So, there'd be a two-day rest for the building and another attempt to heavily disinfect the building before the next cohort. Nine through twelfth grade students would be delivered in three cohorts, and that's based solely on measurements. And I think there's something that needs to, that we talked to the board about, but I think needs to be said openly, is that a fifty percent rule may have worked, but when we went to Plan B, the requirement became, uh, from the state that there has to be no less than six feet distance between every student. That is actually less students in the building. And based on those measurements, we, we need to go to three cohorts because at the high school level, it's not as simple as each class has a teacher or the classes move at a similar population. But now you have kids who may take multiple classes because they're on a credit attainment system at the high school level. They don't even, they don't have to follow a ninth, tenth grade. You may have tenth graders taking an eleventh grade course. You may have people who are overpopulated up to thirty-five or so kids in one class, and they only have twenty or so, twenty-five in another. And our, our principals have worked with that, and they've checked, and they've worked several times over to try to make that work. And at this time, we just logistically cannot make two cohorts work with the numbers that we have right now with students attending school. So, we had to look at something else that was going on across the state. And the residual effect of this is that we, we looked at New Hanover's, um, option because we do share a community college with them. That may be a better online situation for students if we, you know, working with Cape Fear. So, at this point, we're recommending option five because that would allow those high school students to be able to come to school on a three cohort every third-week rotation, uh, which would make that feasible to meet the requirements by the governor's office and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, that, those are our face-to-face options. Uh, the online learning requirement would be the next document that's inside your packet. That plan, uh, this would be students who choose to solely go online. The plan below is designated to meet the requirements under Governor Cooper's directive and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction's Distance Learning Plan Process. An emphasis has been placed on best education practices possible and ensuring that students continue to meet promotion and graduation requirements. Students who select the online option will have a minimum commitment of one semester. K-5, students will be assigned to an A or B cohort with in-person peers. Students would join class via Google Hangout on their cohorts assigned day for periods of small group instruction or whole group mini lessons. During the online days, students will work on the same assignments as their in-person classmates. Students will take core classroom subjects only. I think, six-eight, students will be able to choose to participate in a virtual academy option that may be taught either by PCS teachers or teachers from the Virtual Academy. Students will be assigned to courses matching their grade and are previously assigned high school courses. Only course, only core courses will be offered. Nine through twelfth, students will be able to select from three possible online platforms depending on individual student needs. Apex Online Learning, NC Virtual Public, and the Virtual Academy. Students will be able to select core and elective courses in order to satisfy promotion standards and graduation requirements. Students will work with high school counselors, the alternative learning coordinator, and secondary director to determine the most appropriate choices. The, the nine through twelfth situation, uh, that's something we've been working on traditionally, so that's, that will not be as much of a adjustment for parents, families, and students. Uh, the K-5 and six-eight options would be newer. Uh, and if there's any questions on any of these, myself and Dr. Aiken would be glad to try to answer those at this time. Hearing no specific questions at this time, uh, as a superintendent, I am recommending option five to try to, try to create a reentry plan for Pender County schools.
All right, about all Dr. Hill that you have?
Yes, sir.
All right, does anyone have any questions, discussion?
Mr. Chair, this is Brad George. I do have one question. Dr. Hill, if at some point in time when our numbers, our actual numbers come in for who is, who is coming and who is doing virtual, is, is there an option to go back to the option two for the high schools at that time, or?
And, Mr. George, that's what we're finding as we review what others, other, um, districts are doing, um, especially larger districts. Uh, what we're seeing is that they're coming back and revising based on staff and student numbers. So, our goal is to, uh, clarify some HR definitions and try to get a survey out this week to staff. Uh, there are several HR questions that need to be answered. Uh, it doesn't do us any good to send out, are you willing to come back, or are you, are you planning to come back type statements without explaining to them the options in full and the requirements in full by the state of North Carolina. Um, I think that would create more, more questions than it would answer. So, once we, once we get some guidance from the State Department, uh, we will put those surveys out for staff and students, and then, yes, sir, as, as what we're seeing is that there is a possibility of revising this as we're now seeing other districts already going back and taking, uh, taking other options into consideration.
Mr. Chair, this is Brad George. Can I have one other question? Uh, with option two for the middle, uh, middle and elementary schools, are we still looking at making sure that siblings in the, the two different, those two different areas are grouped together where, where families are going to school at the same time for transportation purposes and possible, uh, childcare for elementary?
Yes, sir. That's a priority in scheduling. It would actually help our transportation system, uh, because right now the requirements are one person per seat unless they are siblings or from the same household.
Uh, hi, this is Beth Burns. Um, are we going to continue the hotspots, um, in our high school parking lots for, uh, Wi-Fi availability, especially? My main concern is the west side of the county, which...
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
So, we will continue that.
We're gonna continue, and we're working with, uh, I mean, we've had, uh, we've got the, the third meeting coming up with public government, our local government, I'm sorry. And, uh, what we're trying to do is figure out all the places we could actually put out as many Wi-Fi, uh, spots as we can. But, of course, we control our schools, and those, those will continue to happen, and we'll try to expand those as, as much as possible. Absolutely.
Very good, thank you.
Dr. Hill, this is Brad again. So, there is, there's some concern about, uh, meal delivery, meal services for, for elementary, middle school kids, um, in particular, that are at home on the two, three days that they're, they're. What is our, can you give an update of what our plan is at this point that we know of? I know there's still some, some questions to be answered there, but can you just give the public a fair view of what, where we're thinking on that?
Yes, sir. Um, so, if we go to the A, A, uh, day, B, B, that would allow us to kind of go back to what we were doing with Meals on Wheels, where we were supplying them a weekend's worth of food. Um, we do not have that absolutely, you know, we do not have that out on a full plan because we actually need this schedule, you know, to know that this is our schedule that we're gonna work from to build that on. But there are some options to go back to some sort of, uh, you know, almost like our backpack program that we've established historically for kids to take home a few, more than one day worth of food with them. So, that will be an option. Uh, we're working towards a full plan based on the vote today.
And, Dr. Hill, this is Brad for one last comment question. There, I've had some requests or questions about our transportation. Uh, right now, our transportation doesn't allow a student unless they're residing at a residence to take the bus to that residence. With this gray area that we're headed into, there's some people that their children will be watched over by their grandparents or, or aunts or uncles or other different families that bus transportation is their only option. Is, do you know of any plan that we're gonna have to relax our transportation rules to allow for students to go other places other than their, their home?
Mr. Hefon, do we have any updates on that information? You're gonna have to come to the mic, sir.
Uh, Mr. George, there's always an option for an alternate stop location for, in, in, within transportation. Um, I'm, this, we haven't really worked on anything like that for this yet because we haven't known exactly what plan we're gonna be under. But, uh, parents will provide an alternate stop location, and that's something that we can't handle.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chair, I have no other questions at this time.
Uh, this is, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, this is Cindy Fontana. I just, I don't know if it's a question or a statement or, or what it is, but, Dr. Hill, um, when, I think it's very important that we impress upon our public that's listening right now that when you make a decision, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when you make a decision about whether you're choosing to do the remote learning at home or whether you're choosing to cho- send your children face-to-face, that, um, it's very, very important that you know that that decision is the one that we will need to stick with just due to logistics and, um, setting up, uh, a lot of things at the schools and to help administrators out. So, that decision needs to be made, and we just can't go back and forth. Is that correct?
Dr. Aiken, you wanna speak towards that, more details?
Yes, sir. Uh, members of the board, so, we are asking that once a parent commits to an, an online option or primarily an online option, that the commitment is for a semester, and, uh, as Ms. Fontana just sort of laid out, the issue would be that if a student suddenly came back, um, our administrators at the school level are gonna be working extraordinarily hard over the next, um, week or so, starting to try to get information out regarding cohort assignments, and those assignments will be absolutely maxing out our classroom six-foot rule. So, if we have students that suddenly return, the domino effect center, we probably won't have space necessarily in any particular classroom or grade level for that student to be able to logistically fit in. So, um, but we didn't want to make the commitment so long that we tied either the parents or the school system's future, um, future op- uh, options. So, we tried to settle in on a semester option, uh, minimally. Now, we, we may have, um, families, especially with the high school academy, that's a little bit more precedent that they have stayed for a year. Um, but in this particular case, uh, we will certainly work with anyone who wants to go longer if that is what they think is best for their student. But, um, anything less than a semester is gonna really put us in a situation where we, we may end up boxing out other students, and then you can kind of imagine the dominoes going across the school building. Uh, so, that was kind of the reason that, you know, we're asking, um, for that one semester, and we will absolutely, you know, talk with any parents, walk them through the, you know, what the options are, what it can look like, what we think we can offer. Um, so that way, they know, they feel like they're making, um, you know, a sound decision for their student.
Okay, um, Dr. Aiken, I have one other question. Um, so, um, basically, so for our specials, I mean, this, this includes everything for specialists and everybody with the six-foot rule and everything, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Um, and in fact, some of the guidance we're getting is actually even stricter on, um, some of our elective classrooms, specifically music, chorus, and art, and we are still working diligently with those teachers. I had a meeting with band directors last week. Um, our arts director is scheduling meetings with, um, each of the various, um, arts departments from theater and dance. from theater and dance, music, band, chorus, as we try to work around not only the six-foot rule, but some of those classrooms have additional issues with movement, of sharing materials, use of instruments, and, and the mask rule for dance. So we are, in some ways, actually having to have even stricter situations for those courses. So we're meeting with those teachers directly. We started last week, and we'll be going through this week, meeting with them to try to make sure that we can still provide that in-person support for those, for those classrooms.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair, right now, but you know, at any point in time, I might have another question, so. Dr. Hill, while I'm sitting, one other thing, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Hill, while I'm sitting here, I've just received something that says that there's some confusion on exactly what option five is. Do you mind just real quick running over that again? Just so everyone can hear, somebody said it kind of went over pretty quickly. Do you mind, or is that a problem?
No, ma'am, absolutely.
Do we just reiterate?
So, so-
I'm sorry, I just, I just don't want us to leave this meeting and people feel like, well, what did that mean exactly? So, I would appreciate it.
And after this meeting and the decision by the board, what we'll do is actually put together a short video that will be released, hopefully maybe tonight, as we get it finished today. We didn't want to do it without the vote. And we'll actually put some slides and explain it in full, but in very layman's terms, K-8 students will go to school on an AB schedule. A-days will either be, will be Monday and Tuesday if you're in A group. If you're placed in B group, you'll go to school on Thursday and Friday of every week, K-8. On Wednesdays, there will be online learning for all students. At the high school level, it will be on a three-week rotation, so you will be two weeks out, one week in. I guess the, somewhat degree of that is if you have a sibling that is watching, an older sibling watching a younger one, basically out of three weeks, there will be three days that that, that those siblings won't be able to watch the younger ones. So I don't know if that's a, you know, it's good, it's about as close as we can get, I think, for helping families cover that. So basically, if you're a K-8, you'll be going to school Monday and Tuesday every week, or Thursday and Friday of every week. If you're in high school, you're going to go to school every third week on option five, if approved.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hill.
You might, you might also want, this is Richard Schwartz, you might also want to let people know that if they go to the Pender County Schools website, on the front page, the meeting agenda is posted, and that information is included in the meeting materials.
Absolutely. And there's also, there's also a virtual option that will be offered, K-12, if they so choose, and everything that we do as far as updates on information for the public will be at the Restarting Together webpage that can be found, there's a link to it on our, on our homepage, as well as signs in the community. So we're trying to point everybody to that page. That's, that's where you could get the most accurate information about what's happening, the latest information is to go to, let's restart together.
So, Mr. Chair, I have one additional question that just popped up. Option five is for K-8, K, or K-12, our pre-K, what is our plan? Do we have a plan for pre-K?
Dr. Aiken has been meeting with pre-K. He'll answer that question.
Yes, sir. We're still working through that. We would, pre-K would largely follow the Plan B option that the board approves. However, just yesterday, we received information regarding the funding stream, and we had looked at actually trying to do both an in-person and online options. Our pre-K teachers had worked really, really hard this last spring to continue to provide some of that, and we were hoping to really be able to do both. However, we just received some information that they, the funding may not come to us unless the student is physically present. So we are, we have a meeting with both Ms. Martina and Ms. Pullen, our pre-K director, to try to take a look at some of the options that we had had, and whether the funding streams that we've generally counted on will still be there. So I should have more information by the end of the week, but our goal is to still provide, kind of like any Plan B, we, we still want to provide some level of in-person support to our preschool-age students.
All right. Mr. Chair, this is Cindy Fontana. Dr. Aiken, don't go anywhere yet. I have another question for you, sorry.
That's quite all right, ma'am.
It, it's a good, it's a good, I think these are good questions. I think, you know, I know we don't want to go on forever, but I do think there's some good questions coming up.
Absolutely.
And this one is from someone that says, so if parents choose the online school option, what are the requirements? Grade, internet, what expect, expectations be given to parents and students, and what is the attendance plan for Google Meet?
So, any grade, we, we are not going to have a criteria that says specifically that past performance is a requirement. Certainly, it factors into whether this may be the best option or not, but per the governor's order, we really don't have a reason to say you may not. Our previous Virtual Academy piloting had been a very different model for a very different time. That had been specifically to take a look at students that perhaps had not been in Pender County schools, or who had very unique needs, and so that original model really is still there, but that's not relative to kind of what we're trying to think about in terms of our online options for parents. We do plan on sending out communication later tonight, should the board approve the plan, to each grade span that would provide some more details, would provide some information regarding online access. As Dr. Hill said, you know, certainly, we're going to try to expand our community presence. There would inevitably be some level of internet access really required for students who wish to do online learning completely. For our students that will be doing some blended or in-person, we, the, the in-person will give us the option to really work with students in making sure that they download and upload work while they're in our buildings, and that is at least one silver lining to, to a Plan B, is that we will have students available to access our in-building work, and our teachers will be able to make sure that those students leave with the information downloaded, or come in and can upload it. For our parents that want to be online only, that's at least some decent, strong level of internet access is, is going to be required. I'm trying to make sure I answer all the different points to your, to your question. The application process, it may get called that, but I would want the public to know that it's not literally an application that we're going to review and then determine whether you qualify or not. That's not the option the governor laid out, and that's not the option that we would want to move forward with in terms of equity. There are some inevitable technical challenges, like having internet capacity. We have talked with our folks, we still think we're going to do, you know, a lot of work with our Chromebooks, we would work with our families, we are trying very hard, our technology team has been magnificent at still trying to make sure that we can connect to school-based software and our platforms, and we would continue to use some of those same platforms that we used in the spring, hoping that our parents and our students are pretty familiar with those. We don't really want to change things up on anybody, and especially for K-5, we, we really discussed it, and that's the grade span that we are obviously most concerned about, especially our K-2 students, and that was really why we worked hard, and our elementary principals and, and our elementary team as a whole have been really great about trying to think about ways to make sure that those students especially stay attached to Pender County teachers, to their Pender County School classmates. All of our, all of our grade spans are vulnerable in different ways. Dr. Hill said this is not, any of these options are the ones that we would most prefer, but of all our grade spans, both for instructional reasons and for social, emotional reasons, that was the one that we really wanted to dedicate any of our school system bandwidth during the day, so that those students could actually participate with their school-based peers. I think if we could have done it, K-12, we would have, unfortunately, that's just another one of those technology logistical hurdles that school systems just don't have the infrastructure to do, but we, we decided to dedicate the, the broadband and the infrastructure that we have to our K-5 students.
Okay. And, and Dr. Aiken, this is Cindy Fontana again. I know that there's just lots and lots of questions coming in and concerns, but if you just want to write this down, there's, there's things such as, so if, if students, after the surveys done, or after the application, or whatever we're doing to determine exactly how many we will have in our schools, if a new student enrolls, this is a really good question, I hadn't thought about this, if a new student enrolls, will they automatically be in online? I mean, you know, if we've met our 50% capacity, is that what will happen if there's new, new children who enroll in our school system? Hadn't thought about that, that's a good one. There's a question out there about, and I'm just giving these so you can take them and do what you want with them, get that with people later, but there's a question about, you know, for people who are working, you know, if they, they don't, their children don't have the option during the day, and you may have said this, and I missed it, if I did, I'm sorry, but could they, could the videos be recorded and they watch them later at night? Because a lot of parents, if they're at work during the day, and I know we went through this in the spring, a lot of parents just feel it's better for them to do it when they get home from work, have dinner, and then they sit down with their kids and do a lot of it. It was just easier that way. So, I don't know, good question coming in.
They are, and I would absolutely encourage, you know, anyone to reach out to their schools, reached out by grade span. They can call the Pender County Central Services, and we'll either get in touch through our school-based staff, our counseling staff, our grade span directors, myself, but we'll absolutely try to make sure that we answer every question that comes in, because I know this is, this is challenging for everyone. It's no less difficult for our parents and our community than it is for anybody in the school system, for sure. And we do want them to be able to make an informed decision, so that they know they feel like they're doing what's best for their students.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Aiken.
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Dr. Aiken, before you leave, can I ask you a couple of questions? I've just got, and I know this could drag on all day, so this will be my last two, I promise. Could you kind of describe what the virtual classroom looks like? Is it going to be a Zoom for high school? Is this going to be a Zoom-type style classroom, or is it going to be random assignments with optional meetings, as was the case in last semester?
Uh, no, that's a very good question. So there are three different platforms we're looking at, none of them are Google or Hangout based, to my, to my knowledge, at least not at their, their basics. So the first one is Apex Online Learning, which is largely an asynchronous, meaning you work at your own pace, sort of on your own. It has its own platform, students access the assignments and the work, and then they upload it. The Apex teachers grade it, and the student kind of is able to monitor their progress through the, through the course and the curriculum. Its defining characteristic probably of, of all three in the high school is that it's largely a self-paced option, and we will obviously assign courses based on the students' graduation and promotion needs. We have a lot of students that already participate in the North Carolina Virtual Public School, that is sort of its own platform, largely uses what's called Canvas. They used to use both something called Blackboard and Canvas, and those were their hosting sites. They can have meetings within those, and those two platforms would sort of handle how they, how they work. Most of those courses are a combination, there's a fair amount of independent pacing, but depending on the course and the teacher that's involved, there are also scheduled office hours or scheduled times that students get together, and that really, again, depends on the course and the specific teacher within the course. And then our next look at is the Pender County Virtual Academy, and that is the work that we started piloting last year with our Ed Options partners. That has its own platform, it's currently been managed by Ms. Asia Winstead, who's done a phenomenal job working with, as a liaison between our students and parents and the Ed Options, which is, they have their own teachers, and those students, again, it's, it's probably the most paced out, their specific assignments, they are expected to check in with their teachers a certain number of times of the week. We are monitored that, we have monitored that in the past, making sure that students are checking in online and doing that work. We actually had students in all three of these scenarios during the spring, they just weren't a significant number of, of our high school students, but we actually had high school students that when March hit, those students just kept chugging along with those exact same platforms. And we actually had students that were both still doing in-person school up until March, but they'd also been doing North Carolina Virtual courses. So those students sort of had a little bit of an experience with what we would see being the total online option. We didn't change their routines, they just kept on working with their online teachers as they had been. So for those students, they would sort of be working in those three platforms. For our students that would be doing the in-person, they, the idea is that, you know, they come to school for those five days. With the reduced numbers, we certainly expect and hope to really be able to do a lot of, I won't say one-to-one instruction, but certainly a lot of small group instruction, so that when those students leave, we can, again, one big difference is, in March, our students left us, and we really never had the ability to pre-download work, we didn't have a chance to structure out what to make sure, you know, was on their Chromebooks when they left. For K-12, one of the big differences that we at least have under Plan B is that for some period of that time, our students will be with us, and we can make sure before they leave, they have downloaded materials, assignments, and work that they would need to be working on. And I think that's an important distinction, because prior to, we really didn't have a way to truly assess whether the students had been able to take the work with them or access it out, you know, out in the world. This way, the students that come to us in person, we will be able to make sure before they leave, they have the work, and I think that's an important piece of the accountability measure that we really didn't have back in the spring. I don't know if I answered your question, Mr. George, I hope I did.
I think so. And then I have, I actually have two, because I have one from another board member. There's a question about EC community going more days as, as opposed to online learning. I know we briefly discussed it, we're still waiting on guidance yesterday. Are we still, still waiting on the answers for that?
Well, in terms of legal guidance, yes, sir, that, that's something that we're working on. I will tell you, Ms. Martina and I actually, again, met this morning. One of the things that we're really trying to do, as we look at all of our individual IEP students and their needs, is, you know, those, those plans are written really based on the number of minutes that a student needs in order to meet those goals. And so right now, what we're trying to go back and for our team in that area is really think more about how many minutes will it take for us to meet that student's needs, and then what's the best way to do that? We think there will be students that if we, if they do go two days a week, but we alter their schedule, we can meet those minutes and provide a greater education. There will be students, and when we look at the minutes that is really already written in the IEP that they need, that that may not be feasible, and we do need to look at a, a different schedule for those particular students that may need to carry on over multiple days, but right now, the one piece of guidance we are getting is really to look at the IEP as it's written, and take a look at how the minutes currently are laid out, targeted to those, to those skills the student needs, and then look at whatever plan that we adopt with Pender County, and say, well, then, under that plan, how do we then meet the needs of these students? We know we have students that are generally in, not with their peers most of the day, they are in specialized classrooms either all day or a vast majority of the day, and that's really not based on the day, we just look at the minutes needed to serve that student, and that's how you really end up in a situation where you have separate classrooms or separate settings. We are starting with those students, of course, first, trying to take a look at how would that look like under any plan, Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C, and then kind of work with each school, and as the master schedules get developed, you know, being really flexible about whether we're looking at a student largely having a schedule with their regular core peers, because they're, they've been successful, and that's worked very well, to looking at students that have either medical or health needs identified, concerns and needs in their IEPs, that when we look at the minutes and we look at what's available, we'll have to go back and, and try to find some ways with the schools to be really flexible. So it's, it's a work in progress, we recognize that there's going to be no one-fit-all option for any of our students. Whatever plan Pender County moves forwards with, with, with our students that are in the EC department, they will need to have some unique flexibility that we probably have never had to look at before. We had some online success with certain groups of students and certain disabilities. We plan on continuing some of those options, because they did work well. We've had students that did say that, that worked, or at least a specific area of their needs, it worked. But the whole child issue is something that we're, we're still trying to figure out, we're working with some of the districts in the area, trying to get some ideas on how they're approaching it, and of course, every district is handling the whole situation differently, but we're trying to work with them to say, how are you dealing- to work with them to say, how are you dealing with, if you have any in-person, how are you managing to work with your various levels of IEP needs? Because we know that, you know, our services are a spectrum, they're not boxes, and because they're a spectrum, we, we have a wide range of, of students who had very few needs, were very successful in our core classrooms. What they needed was just work with the teacher on modifying or accommodating, and then we had students that, that spent the vast majority of their day in specialized settings. And that's what we're trying to figure out, how to, how to accommodate, is especially any of our students that had a high degree of minutes per day in specialized settings, and trying to work with master schedules, work with whether it's AB schedules or five-day week schedules, how we can increase the time to make sure that we are still meeting those IEPs. And those, those individual student schedules will, will certainly look different probably than, than their peers.
And, and Dr. Akins, that's the same with AIG Services and all that, right? We're just looking at each individual student's plan and all of that, and we're going from there, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And in fact, we haven't mentioned our English learners, but they're in a similar situation, and several districts in the area, you know, are, they're trying kind of that same spectrum of approach with, with even our EL students of, how do you at some point determine, well, this, at this point, you need significantly more time in school than this group? And that's a difficult thing when you start drawing a line, because you're always going to have students just on either end of that line. So, we've been talking with some of our local colleagues about how did they arrive at some of the numbers they did? How can we look at our various schools? Of course, you know, our, our EL students are not evenly spread across the school system. So, how do we try to, you know, we may need to, once we have a plan and once we know the number of students that are coming to school or who might choose to be online, we'll probably need to be flexible with allotments if we can be.
All right. And just one additional question, and then I, I promise, this is it. But due to the 50% rule, we'll still be able to change classes and stuff like that, right? Like, if they have EC pull-out services, they'll be able to go to those classrooms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, right?
Yes, ma'am. So, and specifically to EC, that's actually kind of references a conversation we just had about we may have to be flexible about how the services and minutes are delivered. So, those students will absolutely have to have some flexibility. To the larger question, yes. One of the things that we're working with schools on is by going to the six-foot rule, it does allow us to still try whenever possible to, to allow students to have what would look like a normal day. And I, I can't stand here and say with a six-foot rule and, and, you know, talking about the elective classrooms in some way even being more strict than the core classrooms, it, it won't look like normal school, but we're going to try to make it look as normal as we possibly can, giving our in-person students as much of the, of a whole child education as we, as we have. If we can get them to PE, we want to get them to PE. PE probably won't look like it used to, not for a while, but we want to give them a chance to get out there. We want students to be able to take art, if we at all can, and get them into those art rooms. We will, may have the same problem, you know, we have schools where we have floating teachers and sometimes elective teachers have to float into classrooms. So, I don't know that those scenarios necessarily go away or don't go away, but we do want students to be able to rotate through a, a schedule, a, a normal day as much as we can possibly make it.
Thank you, Dr. Akins.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing else.
Pender Early College, what does their options look like? Are they on the high school option with three, or?
So, they continue to sort of be their own schedule. We still plan on starting August 6th with them. We're working with Cape Fear. They are currently having to redo some of their master schedule and their course options. We received an email, I believe, mid-last week. They are going to be looking at each one of their classes, Cape Fear I'm speaking to, in terms of what can be online, what will be, have to be face-to-face, with, with some degree of social distancing, what will be a hybrid of the two. I received an email this morning, they are actively going through that. We anticipate a release of that information next week. And then we will be working not only with Pender Early College, but all of our students that are taking courses with Cape Fear, letting them know whether what they thought they had signed up for was going to be face-to-face, and now it's not. Cape Fear is taking the lead on the building, because it's, it is their building as far as scheduling and cleaning and those types of things. Right now, we not anticipating any courses being scheduled on Fridays with Cape Fear at all, so we are working with them to determine whether they can have a cleaning schedule that we feel comfortable with, and then with, Pender Early would have to maintain a, a four-day week, Monday through Thursday, and then Friday's off. But that's difficult to answer until we know what they're doing with their master schedule, which, again, I was told this morning in an email, we should have either Friday or Monday of next week.
All right. Anyone have any additional questions?
Uh, this is Beth Burns. Are we going to change the times that we, that, for the schools? Are we going to, like, the time that we start and the time that we end? Are those going to remain the same?
We'll defer.
They'll remain similar. If there has to be a change, it'll be based on, you know, we need to get the numbers in and everything. There may be a, and Mr. LaFon, correct me if I'm wrong, but there has been a brief discussion that with the high schools being on, being on their own routes, there may be a slight adjustment, but are we anticipating that at this point for high school routes? Sir? Basically, will there be any change in daytime scheduling as far as start-stop times? I know we had some, we discussed the high schools may have to tweak.
A change in schedule is, is a possibility. We hope not, but until we get the routes built for elementary and middle schools, it's a possible attempt. But it, it is something that we have discussed and thought about.
Okay. Do we know when we'll have something definitive?
Um, it's, to, to build the routes for elementary and middle school is going to take a couple of weeks at least, but I think we probably, once we get started on it, we, we will probably have, be able to get an answer sooner than that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? Uh, Dr. Hill, I have one, I think you could answer. I had an email come in asking about how would this affect the sports and et cetera.
Well, Dr. Akins coming up, but, but basically the sports are, are being discussed. We have the North Carolina High School Athletic Association who's working with that, and so we take the lead from them. And Dr. Akins, you want to give us the latest?
Uh, yes, sir. So, just to paint the full picture, we have, we're currently under a Phase 1 approach per the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, which is allowing us to have students in small pods practicing without equipment. We started that July 6th. I, I think it's been a success. We have students that are, continue to show up. Our coaches have been fantastic. Our plan right now is to continue that until the assigned dead time. So, that leaves sort of the next part. We received information from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association last week indicating that, that fall sports would not start at least until after September 1st. We've not just, yet received a definitive on what happens after September 1st. There is a normal dead period when no athletic trainings or practices occur, and that's the first week of school. So, we will stick with that option as well. We did receive word that the High School Athletic Association is going to be reaching out to superintendents across the state to try to get some information relative to each school system's different start. That is playing a role in this, because school systems had a choice between Plan A and Plan, I mean, Plan B and Plan C. And as Dr. Hill has shared, there are any number of variations across the entire state. I think the Athletic Association is trying to figure out how to maneuver with that. So, I think the first step is, they're sending out a survey, so we anticipate some point in a couple of weeks, or maybe as soon as a week. I honestly don't know an exact timeline. I'm assuming once they have their information back from superintendents, they'll meet as an executive board and give us direction. But we know for right now, everything has to stop the first week of school. We know that there will be no, no athletic events any earlier than September 1st, and right now, we're sort of holding to see what would come after that and what their intentions are.
Okay. What about?
Hey, Don, this is Rich. I, I don't know exactly what the question was about how it would affect sports, but it might, you might also want to make clear that if students choose the remote learning option, they're still eligible for sports.
That is correct.
Okay. And what about after-school clubs and things that need after-school, non-sports related? Any of that stuff still be going on, or how's, how's any of that to be handled?
Uh, we're actually trying to figure that out right now. I had a meeting with Ms. Lofton yesterday, who heads our Paces program. We're trying to understand what the, the governor's expectations regarding after-school in terms of the social distancing requirement. So, as far as our after-school program, we're, we're trying to see whether we can financially continue it, assuming that we have to implement that same six-foot rule, which is my understanding right now. So, basically, if you imagine taking one class of, you know, approximately 25 students that had a teacher, now we may have to split those into three different classrooms, but I still now have to have two additional staff. We're trying to see whether that's going to be, be possible and how we might do that. Regular extracurricular activities, to be honest, I'm going to have to get back on that. We're, right now, we've been focusing primarily on the day. Far as we know, anything on a campus has to follow the six-foot rule regardless of what time of day and what type of event. And that's, you know, exemplified by what we're having to do with our, our athletes. So, that was, some of those same rules would apply to really any extracurricular activity and event, whether that be as big as a sports team or a marching band, or as small as a service club that, that's got together for a special project. So, we'll, that's something we're working on, and we'll, we'll try to get back to you as soon as we kind of, I can give you some concrete answers.
Okay. Um, otherwise, I, like many of us here, I've gotten a lot of emails from EC parents especially, so let me just encourage you to try to work with them best you can.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions?
There's no executive board time, so we'll follow up as soon as we can.
Was that someone in the background with a question? Okay. Uh, Mr. Schwartz, how do we need to proceed here? Do we need to have a vote on, like, a specific plan, or how do we need to go?
The superintendent recommended Option 5.
Okay.
And you do not have a motion, so you need a motion and a motion on the floor.
Make sure you include in the motion, the online requirement.
That's included in Option 5.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Even though it's not the best option, and there is no perfect option, but this is the option I think is doable for our district at this time, and this option is subject to change, I'll make a motion for Option 5.
Okay. Mr. George?
Chairman, I'll, this is Mr. Smith, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Mr. George has made the motion, Mr. Smith has seconded.
This is Richard Schwartz, may, uh, just ask the superintendent for clarification to make sure that everybody knows that in addition to, that any of the options include the online learning component.
Yes, sir, that, that is correct.
Okay. Okay. Mr. George has made a motion, and Mr. Smith has seconded. Uh, so let's do a roll call for the votes. Mr. George?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. George is aye. Mr. Smith? We'll come back to Mr. Smith. Ms. Fontana?
Aye.
Ms. Burns?
Aye.
All right. And Mr. Smith, your vote is?
Ken, are you on mute? Check and see if you're on mute.
No, I'm not on mute.
No, no, Ken on mute.
It appears that Mr. Smith has been disconnected.
Would you repeat that, please?
It appears that Mr. Smith has been disconnected.
I'm sorry, it's gobbled.
It appears that Mr. Smith has been disconnected, he said.
Oh, okay, okay.
You want to try and get him back on the line?
Uh, yeah, you can. If someone there could do that.
Working on it, sir.
I mean, he seconded the motion, but we need to get everyone here.
This is Ken, I apologize, my phone, my phone disconnected.
Okay. We, uh, we just did the roll call. Everyone voted in favor, so we just need you for the roll call on the Option 5. So, what is your vote?
Aye.
Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Hall, your vote also needs to be recorded.
Okay. My vote is aye. All right. Uh, looks like that closed session is next, so do we have a motion to go to closed session?
I don't have the motion in front of me.
Mr. Schwartz, would you read that, please, and allow, allow somebody to vote on it? Or make a motion?
Sure. The motion is, the Pender County Board of Education will enter closed session, subject to advice from the attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A1 and A6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under General Statute 115C319, and to consider matters related to initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318.11A3, to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. That is the end of the motion. Somebody could just say so moved.
So moved. Beth Burns.
All right. Ms. Burns has made the motion. Do we have a second?
A second, Brad, George.
Okay. Mr. George has made a second. Uh, all right, let's do the roll call. Uh, Ms. Burns?
Aye.
All right, Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Fontana?
Aye.
And my vote is aye, and motion carries. Thank you. So, the closed session, um...
Hold, hold tight, we are...